Next item.
My second special report, roles of social, school's social workers and school counselors.
So this was a request Dr. Mee that you had made just on the roles. We talked about this when we were in Lansing as school safety and other things come up. So I'll ask Ms. Alcadre, Dr. Roland Bazey-Gates, and they have other individuals that will be part of the presentation. Can we thank them?
Yeah, thanks.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Maleko. My name is Amala Alcadre. I'm the principal of Snow School. I am here to present to you about the roles of both social workers and counselors at Dearborn Public Schools, social workers in the K-12 setting, and counselors in the middle school and at the high school levels. Here to present with me today is Dr. Rola Bazey-Gates, Special Education Coordinator, Mrs. Rola Harp, social worker from Fortson High School, Mrs. Kim Day, social worker at Smith Middle School, Mrs. Mary Gass, counselor at Bryant Middle School, and Mrs. Melinda Dachlala, counseling department chair at Fortson High School. Is this working?
Yeah, it's working.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Alcadre, for the introduction. It's an honor for us to be here to present to you about the role of school social worker and also the role of school counselor. School social workers are trained mental health professionals who can assist with mental health concerns, behavioral concern, positive behavior support, academic and classroom support, consultation with teachers, parents, and administrators, as well as to provide individual and group counseling and therapy.
The role of school social worker?
Role of the school social worker include special education evaluation, MAT and IEP meeting, which stands for multi-evaluation team and evaluation for students with special needs, student support, general ed and special ed, one-on-one, small groups, classroom push-in support, targeted support groups, also to create FBA, which stands for functional behavioral assessment and behavior intervention plan, and also to implement the plan and monitor the plan with the student. Also, school social worker include their role is multi-tier support system, MTSS, to attend the meetings on a weekly basis in the schools, positive behavior intervention support, PBIS, being part of restorative practices, MyStar documentation, service logs, and Medicaid billing, also parent and community resources, and also dealing with the crisis intervention in the buildings. Role of school social worker include also early intervention and young fives, classroom support and presentations, teacher resource and support, administrative resources and support, being part of school committees and serving on committees in the schools, staff, attending staff meetings, special education meetings, and also conducting home visits, parent support, and child protective service reporting. So this include a lot of services and roles of school social worker in the buildings. Now I want to introduce Kim Day, which is going to talk about trainings and skills for social workers.
Good evening and thank you for having us. I am Kim Day. I have been with the district. I just finished my 29th year as a school social worker.
Good for you.
Thank you. All school social workers are masters level social workers. We all have masters degrees. We have additional certification in school social work. School social workers have specialized skills and trainings in the areas conflict resolution, anger management, self-esteem and self-image, student empowerment, diversity intolerance, restored practices, which is huge right now, crisis prevention intervention, social emotional learning, which is another real trend in education right now. It involves positive social interactions, learning about self-awareness, about self-regulation, about decision-making, all of which studies have shown are linked to higher achievement. We are members of our school professional learning communities. We provide support to at-risk students as well as proactive interventions for all of our students. So we don't just work with our at-risk students. We work with all students in a preventative manner. We also have specialized skills with grief and trauma therapy, special education eligibility evaluations, and also interventions for those specialized students. For example, students who have maybe emotional impairment, are diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, cognitive impairments, learning disabilities. We have specialized training for interventions for those students to help them succeed. Cognitive behavior therapy, which involves helping students change their mindset and then change their behaviors to more successful behaviors. Positive behavior support, which involves teaching and reinforcing successful school behaviors, as well as linking coordination of services, which means helping our families access supports and resources in the community. On any given day, we can be doing any or all of these things. We have to change hats quickly. Flexibility is important, but everybody I know, we love our jobs. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Norma Harp, social worker at Fortson.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll just keep it brief. Do we have the slide? Okay. I thought we would give you a little bird's eye view of what social worker role looks like in the high school. We work not just with the high schools at Fortson, but we work with all the other high schools as well as the community at large and other communities. And basically, our role is to prepare them for the world. I believe that some questions arose about what do we do? How do we get them ready? And that's where high school, middle school, and elementary social workers work together. Because what we want to do is we want to highlight critical thinking skills, youth leadership, and social youth dialogue. And the feedback we get from Ivy schools is that we do a really good job with that. An example is U of M in Arbor has a social, Metropolitan Detroit Social Youth Dialogue Program, and our students, we have seven intra-students from Fortson. There are seven, six students from Atto, and there are some students from Dearborn High that go and meet with other communities. And they learn about social youth dialogue. They look about, they talk about their ethnicity, their race, and then they dialogue so that you don't go to confrontation, you go to conversation. And those are lifelong skills. The way we collaborate with the other high schools and partners is with the MLK March, that is student-driven, the Diversity Summit with the three high schools, where the students give workshops. And they give workshops from microaggression to whatever they choose to do. They do National Mix It Up Lunch, where students who are in different communities, maybe you have the jocks, maybe you have the band, maybe you have the newcomers, maybe you have the NHIS who tend to stick with their quote-unquote "own," mix it up, have a mix-it-up diversity lunch, and learn about other communities. The mother-daughter tea that provides scholarships for all three high schools, the superintendent student advisory committee. I know you had a presentation about that, but that brings communities together, and it's real important for them to understand that even though the superintendent has the highest power, he has a shared power and a shared responsibility. And you often joke about the day of snow day, right? And then they start to dig in you and say, wait a minute, wait a minute. But they understand the complexity of the decision, and that's really important for them to understand. We also do social dialogue with, we're working with Michigan State University, Holland, Michigan, Cranbrook, MSU, Wayne State. I mean, I can go on and on with the cas tech, because we want them to understand how to dialogue. That's not something you just learn through text. You also have to learn through experiences. And lastly, I would say that restorative circles, whether it be in the classroom push-in conferences, that's critical, because we want to keep kids in school, and we want them to learn that if you did wrong, don't run away from it. Repair the harm, get back on the table, you're not leaving school, and let's continue to learn. Thank you. Melinda Dachlala from Fortson Counseling.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm going to be talking about counseling in the high school setting. Counselors like the social workers have masters degrees and they're trained with, they have a lot of training in social and emotional services. However, in the counseling setting in the high school, we end up with extremely time-sensitive tasks. So we are going through a lot of things month by month, and I'm going to go over these things with you. The counseling department offers an open-door environment for students who seek assistance with personal and family issues, which we've seen a huge increase, especially this last year, school-related concerns, academic career counseling, and college readiness. At the, in the high school, August and September and October are extremely busy. We are getting back to school. We are getting everyone's schedule situated, making sure they have what they need to be successful. We are dealing with student concerns, parent concerns. We are dealing with stuff in all different ends, like for test-out registrations, reviewing our EDPs. We're talking about early admissions stuff with students. And then October, once the beginning of the year stuff starts dying down, October gets really kind of fast-paced, because we do something called the Common App. And I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's-
I'm sorry, what did you say?
We, in October, we do something called the Common App, and I don't know if you're familiar with that. But what it is, is it's an application that you do online in one, at that one website, and it sends it out to the different colleges. So the counselors have to write a letter, recommend, meet with the students, write a letter of recommendation, do a report, and it all has to be done by November 1st. It's not flexible. And while we're doing that, another thing that happens in October is Michigan College Application Week, where the goal is every student, every senior applies for college. So we bring them to the media center. We have everybody apply for college. We get them started with Fast Flow, which is financial aid. We get them started thinking about careers and career readiness, and we go over some of the career cruising things they've done in the past. And we also are doing stuff in regards to dual enrollment, which is enrolling at the college. That, once we get planning with that, with the meetings, that leads into November, where we start the registration, which is very timely and time-consuming. And we start getting ready for career cruising with the younger students that are coming in. And we have to start getting ready for more test-out exams. We have to start getting ready for presentations that we do in the classroom. In January, kind of start, starts things all over again. So that Common App that I discussed, that, there has to be a mid-year report that's reported for every student. We have to adjust semester two schedules. We have to look at audits. We have to look at, we have to do updates to the schedule, making sure everyone's situated for semester two. And then in February, the next big thing that happens is we have to start getting people scheduled for the following year. And that takes a long time, because there's a lot of students in the school. And we also have to visit the middle schools and do it for the incoming ninth graders that are currently in eighth grade. We are, we are doing orientation for ninth graders. We are getting students who are potential Collegiate Academy students situated. We are involved in state assessment proctoring. We have, each counselor has to proctor AP exams, which means they're out of the building. And we have to do, that leads us to May, which things just go really fast. We have senior exit interviews. We have dual enrollment for the following year. We have honors night. We are continuing with, like, the Common App comes up again. We have to do a final report. We have to update our EDPs. We have to do, we have to get involved with audits again, and we have to get involved with commencement. So things are constantly moving at a very fast pace. And during this time of everything that we have to do, we also have parents that show up at our door. We have staff members that come to us, just like parents do. We have students that come to us. And as I've stated in the beginning, the problems are increasing. The family problems are increasing. The suicides are increasing. So these, these are taking, you know, this takes time. You know, we take the time out, all the counselors, and we listen, and, you know, we use our skills, and everyone does a great job of it. The next person that's going to speak is Ms. Mary Gass. She's a counselor in the middle school setting.
Thank you for having us once again. I'm fortunate that I just completed my 30th year in education 24 as a counselor. And I've been at Bryant this past year. If you think of middle school as kind of like a bridge, we're getting these kids from elementary. They're coming into middle school. We're preparing them for the rigor of middle school, and then we're getting them ready to cross that bridge over into high school. Thinking about tonight in Detroit, middle school's kind of like the fireworks on the bridge. Middle school students are very unique. If, we've all been middle schoolers, I'm sure you've had middle schoolers. Lots of social issues, emotional issues. Our biggest job as a counselor is to help them to be successful academically. And you'll see on the screen the different things we do month-to-month. I'm just going to touch briefly on a few of those things. Obviously, we do a sixth-grade orientation with all our sixth graders, lots of anxiety with our sixth graders starting middle school. We meet with those parents. We talk with those parents. Also, new student orientation, and that just isn't in September. Students want to come to Dearborn schools. We have new students coming every month, every week. We have to orientate all those students and their parents to the district, to our buildings. We have behavior expectation assemblies for all of our students, so they understand the core values of the Dearborn Public Schools. Part of our duty daily as counselors is lunch duty. We spend an hour and a half in the lunchroom. This is a great way for our, for us to build relationships with our students, for them to trust us. Anytime I have a student follow up with me, I always say, where will you see me? And they'll say, Mrs. Gass, I'll see you at lunch, or I'll see you in the hallway. We want to be visible to them. We also support the PBIS implementation in our building and are very involved in that.
PBIS?
Yes.
Is what?
Positive behavior intervention.
Positive behavior intervention.
Thank you.
We have assemblies. We have presentations. We have celebrations for students through PBIS. Also, if we have parent contracts with students who are two or more grade levels below, we meet with those parents, go over that contract, talk about how we can help their student to be more successful. We meet with the students on their contract to make sure they have a plan of action and goals of how they're going to achieve academically. I haven't even mentioned scheduling, but of course, we do scheduling first and second semester. Lots of our job, I would say, the majority of our job is conflict resolution, mediation, and restorative circles. We do keep track of this. This past school year just at Bryant, we had 313 mediations-
Wow.
-and restorative circles with our students.
Wow.
These little issues hinder their ability to concentrate in class and perform academically. So we like to nip those things in the bud immediately, so they can get back in the classroom. Social media has added a whole new dimension of conflict, especially at this grade level, these grade levels. So these mediations deal a lot with what's going on through social media. We try to get them to solve the problem and then move on and get back to class. Counselors do sub once in a while. We have teachers that coach and have chess teams and things like that, so they leave the building a little early. So counselors come in at the end of the day and help to sub. As I said, we have parent meetings. We coordinate the visits for our eighth graders for the high school programs to come in. The DC MST comes in to speak, Henry Ford Early College, Collegiate Academy. We want to make our eighth graders aware of all those programs. We do career exploration with all our seventh and eighth graders through career cruising. We don't do the career cruising in sixth grade, but we have other career-type programs we do with our sixth graders. We coordinate elementary feeder visits with our administration. We go to all the elementary schools in the spring that will be coming to our middle schools to meet with those fifth graders and get them prepared for middle school. And then in March, we start our course selection for the next year. The sixth graders plan their schedule for seventh, seventh for eighth. Our eighth graders plan their schedules for high school. We also invite the high school counselors over to meet with our eighth graders for that as well. And the counselors in the middle school plan the promotion ceremony for the eighth graders and the honors night presentation.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Yes. Trustee Barry?
How many social workers do we have in the district? About?
We have in the district, yes, 36.6 social workers.
Thirty-six point six, 21,000 students. How many counselors do we have at Fortson?
At Fortson right now, we have seven.
Seven, for 3,000 students. My comments are very simple. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Elaine?
Dr. Maleko.
Dr. Maleko, I was just going to say, sorry, I didn't, this is relative to that. Yeah, they do great work, and that's why we wanted the presentation. And we did have two continuous process improvement teams, one on each, that had recommendations. Even though, you know, doesn't sound like a lot, we have increased social, I think in Dr. Bazey-Gates, we have increased-
Yes, last year, yes, we did hire five school social workers. We were very proud and happy and honored that we have more social worker. And we just interviewed and recommended also two more social workers. So a first social worker for Fortson, and one, of course, for Michael Bari and my board.
And last year, the Wayne County Enhancement Meldge helped to support an increase in counseling. And again, we need, you know, more support. But there was a time that we got, especially the counselors, cut down to almost nothing, if the board can recall, when we had those tough budgets. So we've been able to build it up. And of course, we'd like to have more, but we do appreciate the great work they're doing. And just like all these things going on on a national level, it's just critical to have a counseling and social worker to have a career in college readiness, to issue social, emotional, and yes, social media is a whole nother environment of things that are occurring. And so that's where the students really need that extra support as things are occurring more frequent. Maybe not more frequently, but they're out there more, more frequently because of social media.
We're very happy and grateful, honestly, of the leadership of our department and Dr. Maleko, and also the school social worker. Their work is very critical, and the school counselors also in our schools.
Trustee Elaine?
Yeah, I would just like to thank you too, because it's hard to prove a negative. So you, what your work does is not, it takes away problems. It doesn't allow problems to, to fester. And when problems are solved, it looks, everything looks easy. So I know that your work solves a lot of problems and avoids a lot of conflict. I think that we should mention that psychologists, school psychologists are also a part of your team.
Sure.
And although you're all women here, I know that we have some male social worker psychologists as well. And that's really important for the boys in our schools. But I, I guess I would direct a question to Mrs. Alcadre. I know the answer, but it's kind of a rhetorical question. The teachers, the administrative, the principals are academic specialists, and the social worker psychologists are really behavioral, abnormal psychology, sociology specialists. I hope that principals and teachers are taking advantage of the expertise of our social work and psychology counseling staff. But I don't know whether you have, people do presentations? The social workers do presentations and-
Yes, yes, they do PDs. They provide the trainings to teachers, to staff.
Counseling or consulting with principals?
Consulting, definitely. A lot of support to principal administrators and also teachers. Yes, they do.
Yes. They're also, at the elementary level, it's a little bit different than the high school level, because we don't have counselors, but social workers are very much a part of the MTSS process. So we meet, I mean, I meet with my social worker, I would say, daily. And I don't want to speak on behalf of other principals, but I'm assuming the same thing. It's very open communication, and we have to work together to ensure that we support every single child that walks through our doors. But they are a part, at least, of the MTSS process, where there's, you know, open communication, so that we can support any child that needs it.
Good, because they're the link back to the family, and usually, that's where you're going to find a problem developing would be in the family or in the community. I'm assuming that the school social workers are represented on some of our community task forces, like law enforcement task forces also? I don't know whether that's the case, but-
Yeah, I'm not positive on that.
Our city should be utilizing some of your expertise as well. I don't know whether they are, but youth, youth crime, youth behavioral issues-
Sure.
-should come back to the school for some of our expertise as well.
Yeah, we have a few social workers attend with the police department, for example, training about trauma and about violence and keeping schools safe. Yes.
Good. The, the mental health piece is really important, and, and we've all been saying that we feel like there's more of it these days. Nobody knows whether there's more, but I do know that the intensity of it is definitely more. When I was growing up, you might get somebody on the playground, my dad can beat up your dad, that kind of stuff. Now, it's a whole different world, because, I mean, we've seen in our country elementary kids bringing weapons. So it's, it's a whole different ballgame. But I would like, because of your expertise and because of the importance of all of the community knowing that, I think that you should do some presentations to parents. And Mr. Mustin and Dr. Maleko, when we do some of our bullying, we have a great bullying program, but our students should know signs of depression as well. So that's your expertise, and we need to empower those students to come back to you and to the, the whole school staff-
Yeah.
-when they have information, because they're the people, they're the, the ones who will hear or see most quickly troubled students. So I, I really, really appreciate your, your work. I want to say that, and all of, all of the support staff. So I just want to push it out more. I know it's hard to get any more training in any place, but it really is important for-
Yeah, I just agree with you 100% Mary Elaine. And I just want to mention to you that this year, we did invite a team of psychiatrists, clinical social workers, psychologists, to come to our district and present it to parents and staff, different schools. Why? Because it's important. We need to bring awareness and education to our parents, definitely, and our staff, to teach them about signs of depression, anxiety, bipolar. These are important issue.
Right.
So the key that we're doing, honestly, is providing, yes, more training, PDs, and education to everyone.
Thank you.
Because this is how we're going to really, you know, deal with issues like that.
Trustee Hamud.
Thank you. Thank you, every single one of you. I know that, to me, I-
I believe this department is one of the most important, really, the work that you do. And, you know, to think a school as big as Fortson to have seven counselors, that's really, to me, that's, that's an area I would, I hope we can see expand, because, you know, it really is, for example, you go to your counselor to find out about what college you want to go to, what scholarships you can apply for, the depression that you're going through, you know. And to look at this, to look at our community and the resources that are allocated here, we need these resources more than other communities. And unfortunately, when we do have immigrants, refugees, people, you know, children that really did go through trauma and are coming here, I just wish that our government would realize that we need extra resources for this specific department to be able to help them. This is, this is where the resources are needed. So thank you for all you do. I really don't know how you do it with the volume that you have. And at some point in, how many psychologists do we have that are utilized by the district?
I believe we have 12, 15?
Fifteen.
Yes, we have 15, 15 psychologists, yes, that we share them.
Yeah. And at what point in time, you know, are we facing, whether it's liability, depression going up, suicide rates going up? You have children that, you know, are being more and more exposed to whether it's drugs or weapons, and, and it's, you know, it weighs heavy on all of their hearts, and this is something that they have to deal with. At what point in time do they have to, you know, refer for medication? Or, you know, I don't know how they do what they do, but it just mind-boggling to me.
Just, you know, you guys brought up some questions about how do we support, and that's one of the things that we really, we work in conjunction, counselor, social worker, psychologist, and we let our students who have health issues, we teach them how to self-manage. And we also collaborate with outside community agencies. I want you to know that those checks and balances are in place. And the other thing that we do, especially in the high school, we have fantastic students who know how to speak up in a quiet confidential way. So I want to reassure you that a lot of what you're talking about is being addressed, but in a confidential way, in a confidential way, where it's behind closed doors with parents, with students. And you're right, it needs to be spoken to, but we do that a lot of times confidentially.
That's great. And are those covered, for example, when you do, when you are seeking outside help and so on?
Yes, absolutely. Because we're really honored that a parent has the emotional strength to come knock on our door and say, I need to figure this out. And our response to them is, you love your kid. You have tremendous courage. We're honored to partner with you. Let's sit, let's talk. And I want you to know that it will be totally confidential.
Financially, if you refer them to treatment elsewhere or something?
We always make sure there's, if they don't have insurance, we have agencies that do without insurance. There's always, there's always a place.
That's, that's great to know.
In my segment to talk about the PLCs, and I know it's getting late, so I'll be really quick. But we, I, I forgot to say that the social worker is often the point person. If we have a student that we suspect is suicidal, so we are all trained at assessing risk and then getting appropriate resources for those students. We're also the point person when they're asked via Child Protective Services report. We're trained to, to decide, you know, do we need to report this? So I just, I skipped that little line, and it was really-
It's important. Thank you.
I would, I'd like to thank Dr. Maleko for having you all come here, because this is such, such an important topic. And we need to know what your, what your work is. I am, I am, I have a question about, where do you get your referrals? Do teachers refer students that are obviously not coping well in the classroom? Where else do you get your referrals?
Good question, yes. We get referrals usually, social workers, from parents, from teachers, from administrators, anyone, you know, that really concerned about the student can refer a student to a social worker, definitely.
So your relationships with the professionals that you work with is just as important as your relationships with your students?
Definitely, yes.
Yeah, that's really critical, so that they feel- Yeah, it's really critical so that they feel comfortable that they can bring the issues to you.
And everything is done confidential, yeah.
Yeah. Just, trustee Nasser.
Is there a way for students, is there a way for students to anonymously say that there's something maybe going on with another student to get help with for them?
Yes, we have had a lot in the high school level, we have a lot of students that will come to us, and they'll close the door they know to, and they'll say, "I'd like to tell you something, you know, something I..." Our students are really good about supporting each other and helping each other, so there's a sense of community and a sense of, you know, wanting to help others. So we do get a lot of other students that tell us things.
Trustee Petrusk.
Okay, some of this was already kind of touched upon, so trustee Elaine was talking about it. I wanted to make sure that you partnered up, and I sure don't want to add to your plate because I was exhausted just reading everything that you did. And I marvel at it, and I too think you are an extremely vital part to our school days and very important. And I was on the board when we had to cut everybody in 2008, and it just hurt me no end knowing that, what kind of damage we could potentially be inflicting upon our students and our families by not having the resources to go to. So I'm glad to hear that the numbers have gone up. I still think we need more, but that'll be something for us to look at the budget for and try to find a way to get that. That being said, PTAs, and you touched upon that you do make an effort to have presentations to your parent groups, so I hope PTAs are part of that. The SROs, I'm assuming then, if, even if you're not invited, if the chief doesn't invite you to a police function, do you have a team mentality with our school resource officers, I'm assuming?
Absolutely.
Where you, where they know you and you know them, and everybody's communicating?
Yeah, I would say whenever, and, you know, I came from the high school, but the relationships that we had with our SRO was so important. Anytime that there was any kind of a sticky situation or a serious situation, it was always administration, social work, counseling. It was everyone coming together as a team, bringing their expertise together to support the student and the families. So the relationships are very strong.
Well, another way, and I've thought about it over the years and have attempted it and haven't been successful, I'm president of something called the Federation of Neighborhood Associations. But our neighborhoods also are a point of contact with our students and our families. And a lot of times, they know things that are going on that you may not recognize within the schools. So I'm going to have a conversation with all of our neighborhood associations to see if we could somehow work a partnership with them. I've suggested over the years that we have our, hold our meetings during a time when the parents are in the buildings and that they can, because we are all struggling and getting volunteers to go to those kinds of things. But the reason I'm suggesting it in your presence is because that, neighborhood organizations are also the ones who are familiar with what's going on with their local community members. And they would be ones to help support and/or provide another resource potentially, and/or they might need to, you know, they might be the family that has been kind of lost in the shuffle too. So I, like I said, I don't want to add to your plate because it's already full, but it's something that I think we need to look at as another potential avenue.
I definitely agree with you, and also that's what we do, collaborate with community, with agencies in the community, work together as a team. All of us sit around the table and we talk about how to help our students and families in Dearborn. So we are delighted and happy and honored to work with any organization that you recommend.
And we've had the conversation at our end, so...
Sure. No, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Just, we can talk, no problem. Thank you very much for having us. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item, please.
You didn't want to add to their plate, but you did.
Not necessarily.
Well, good, good, good.
Could be a while.
Next item is action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there, there is a supplement at the table, just FYI. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. Hearing none.
I was just had a question about, so where's the contract? Number 15. Do we have to vote for that individually? No.
No.
Okay.
Not to my aware of.
All right.
But we can think though.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, recommended action, move that action items numbered 1 through 17 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, and there's no concern about any other item. All who's in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No nays? Genonymous?
No budget, no.
So next item, please.
This is the fun part for me. Summary of agenda item actions. Number one, approval of change orders. Number two, approval of a contract professional educational services. Approval, number three, approval of contract services to Tandis Sentiva per board report 17-137. Number four, approver, approval, approval of a purchase order to the city of Dearborn for concrete replacement. Number five, approval of change orders. Number six through eight, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items from P through 12. Number nine, approval of 2018, 2019 schedule, Board of Education meeting per board report 17-141. Number 10, approval of policy updates per board report 17-141. Number 11, approval of 2017, 2018 second budget revision per board report 17-142. Number 12, approval of 2018, 2019 budget per board report 17-143. Excuse me. Number 13, approval of 2018, 2019 district membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association per report 17-144. Number 14, approval of the proclamation supporting National Arab Heritage Month per board report 17-145. Number 15, approval of the ratification of the Dearborn Federation of Teachers Local 681 AFT Adult Education Chapter Contract. Number 16, approval of donations. And number 17, approval of the appointment of Rema, Ms. Rema Hassan, to principal at Woodworth School.
Next item, please.
Yes, I would like to...
Oh. Oh. Always jumping the gun.
Rema's there. Everyone, that was too quick with the applause, but she deserves it. Come on up, Ms. Hassan. We have to do it again, we're going to have to do it again.
She was getting it quiet because I saw a lot of surprise looks.
All right, let's give now officially again a round of applause for Rema, the new principal of Woodworth Middle School.
Good evening.
Very excited.
President Mead, Superintendent Maleko, trusted board members. I'm extremely excited. This is actually a bittersweet moment for me because I leave behind the Becker community, the Becker family, and I'm very thankful for, you know, serving them. I've learned so much from that, and I want to thank my parents, my teachers, and obviously the families that we have that I have served. They will always have a special place. But I look forward to building new relationships at Woodworth, and I'm excited to take on this new chapter and hopefully bring great success with it. So I want to thank you for the opportunity and thank you for believing in me. So...
Congratulations, Rema.
Now, next item.
And Woodworth really needs you, and it needs a leader, and Rema truly has been that. And I think it's because of her leadership experience at Becker that made her such a great candidate. So congratulations again, Rema.
Super. Next item, please.
Discussion item, policy updates, staff use of cellular phones and technology-based information systems.
Dr. Maleko?
Ms. Ali Bazey first.
Oh, okay.
So the policy committee is hard at work, and Technology-Based Information Systems was our last policy that we reviewed and updated. And really, there weren't any major changes to it, just basically, we got rid of pagers and palm tops since we don't use pagers anymore. It hadn't been updated.
Speak for yourself.
It hadn't been updated since 2000. And then we added websites and social media applications. So the changes to that policy were pretty straightforward, and just to update Technology-Based Information Systems. Also, staff use of cellular phones, changed some of the wording, and that we talk about, it's a little bit outdated. Most of the technology ones are outdated. Again, this one hadn't been updated since 2005. And so we just talked about how it's appropriate for staff to use cell phones that are issued district cell phones, and that it is property of Dearborn schools, subject to search, and that the content and usage must comply with the acceptable use policy for Dearborn schools. And then this talks about, the old policy talks about how it's billed by minutes, and it's no longer billed that way. It's billed by packages and that the district has a package for this purpose, this purpose. So again, nothing major as far as the staff use of cellular telephones. Now, we do have some other technology policies coming through that we didn't complete discussion on. We ran out of time during our last policy committee meeting. So you'll see some more with technology usage. And then also, I just put in board briefs for this week, actually, it will be probably two weeks before you see it, but the guidelines for staff cellphone usage as well. So, you know, we don't require guidelines approval, approval for guidelines, but we do want to keep you abreast of those changes that are related to things like this. So that's it for policy committee. Any questions? These are pretty straightforward. There'll be more coming through. We're actually looking at as many as possible each meeting.
I see no hands up, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, Board of Education business. First one is acknowledgement of correspondence.
I'm so sorry, before we get there, this is still pertaining to policy. We all voted on the proclamation to declare April as National Arab American Heritage Month. And this is a nationwide campaign, us being the largest Arab American population gathered here in the United States, being Dearborn. I'm very proud that the policy committee had brought this forward and that the district has adopted this. I think that now more than ever, with bigotry as, or hate crimes increasing, miscommunication, misunderstanding, propaganda, like the propaganda we quite frankly heard about today through the article, misunderstanding about the Yemeni culture, and specifically, if we're just going to talk about that. This is why this proclamation is so important, is that we get to battle that through education. And, you know, we passed a welcoming resolution in the past, and that's great. And my thing is, we don't want to just have words on paper, and this proclamation, and hopefully it will be published and read, is very important because this goes back to education. And actually, arabamerica.com, who kind of started this, gives a curriculum kit, and we should get our hands on that. And it's basically education about Arab American history, over 100 years of being in this country, learning about different cultures through the Arab Americans that are here to tell the story. And I think that that's great, that we get to do that in our schools. And I hope that these are not just words on paper. I hope that we could incorporate that in education, all the Middle Eastern countries, and celebrate this month as we should celebrate, whether it's Black History Month, or trustee Elaine and I were talking about the governor past May, June...
Immigrant Heritage Month?
Immigrant Heritage Month. These are things that we should be proud of, and in specific, Arab American Month. I look forward to next April, and I look forward to education and celebrating all that our various cultures have to offer. So thank you to the district. I'm very proud to be a part of this district, and I am very proud of this proclamation.
Trustee Elaine.
I'd like to echo those comments and throw in another one. I sometimes have heard people say, "Well, why do we need this month, that month? We have Black History Month, we have Native American Heritage Month, we have Immigrant Heritage Month." And I would reply that most of the time, we're teaching mainstream culture. We don't know as much about our minority groups. And it's worth, we don't know about, as much about our majority group, women. Women's history has brought us a lot of information that existed, but we didn't, we didn't point out and we didn't know. So I'm really glad to have this, and I'm very proud to celebrate being in this community. I'm very proud of Arab American culture, being able to take advantage of it, the strong family values that people bring. And I'm glad that we can do this, and it's not anything that costs us any money. But those teachers, and this was brought to us by a teacher, I think Dr. Maleko was the teacher who first suggested it, those teachers that want can take advantage of the curriculum. So it's a good thing, and I appreciate us doing it.
Good.
They'll be very happy. And I'll send that out tomorrow, so thank you.
Are there any other acknowledgements of correspondence?
I had two. I have two letters, just one from the Boy Scouts of America thanking us for their support of the Boy Scout programs throughout the district. And then we had one from Mary McLean Wilson, the owner of the Buffalo Bills. There's a lot of monies that are being donated to the Metro Detroit area and the New York Buffalo area for promoting what we just passed in our contract with extra recess and healthy living and healthy Dearborn. So we've received some of those grant funding, and she actually came, and she was thankful because she visited McDonald. I actually met her with Dr. Choklin and other group, it was a few weeks ago, and she was very impressed and very grateful for the time. I think they may have driven by Fortson, but they were just amazed with what was going on. And so the Playworks program that we're promoting throughout the district, that's now expanding into other elementaries, we have grant funding for that, and it's to promote healthy living, but to have organized play for students. And a few, Ms. Modica, McDonald had really promoted that. So I wanted to, you know, thank them, and it was something we were able to tap into this grant funding. It was three years ago, and Dr. Choklin and I went to the state superintendent conference. That's how we were able to tap into some of that funding, and it's going to continue to expand. So just wanted to mention that, and she is like a multi-billionaire. I don't know if everybody was aware of that.
Yeah, I do remember already.
So, yeah. There's a lot of money that is being donated back to Metro Detroit for this program.
That's great. I was surprised with the origin of that.
Buffalo Bills, yeah, that was kind of a surprise. I didn't know where that was going. But I will say, I mean, it's just a really popular topic, at least among school students. My son always found lunch and recess to be the greatest times of the day. More recess is good.
All right, okay. Next item?
Board member committee and organization reports.
I don't see any. Next item?
Board member or superintendent commentary?
Yes, Doc.
You know, Dr. Maleko read a list of retirements, and I remember my son one time saying, "I'm so mad that you guys let all these great teachers retire." And I said to him, "Well, that's so that we can get great new teachers in." And one who is not retiring but is letting a new great coach in is our Edsel Ford football coach, Mark Tyler, who is, who may still be coaching track, but I think he is leaving the position of football coach. And I just want to say that I know that he's contributed so much to Edsel Ford High School and to the young men who have played football there. My own son has benefited from that. He was a fabulous coach in building character, and I am so sorry to see him go. He will be followed by an extraordinary alum of Edsel Ford, Mike McPherson. And I know Mr. McPherson will do a great job, but I just wanted to thank Mark Tyler for his many years, many, many years. I think it's in excess of 25 years of coaching and teaching. So although he's not retiring, he's retiring from one position. I don't know how many other coaches are leaving with him, but just to show you what an example of how, what kind of work they put in, one of the other coaches at Edsel started as an Edsel...
One of the other coaches at Edsel started as an Edsel student, Gary Schleif has now a scholarship named after him. He was so committed, he retired from Dearborn Schools more than ten years ago, he still comes back to every football practice. He brings chocolate chip cookies, apples. That is the type of thing that is, there's not enough money ever in the world to pay for that. So I'm gonna start tearing up when I think about all that they've contributed, but I just can't say enough, but I can say thank you, so.
You can add, I saw Mr. Schleif at two different graduation parties. He won't go away.
Yeah, I mean, our students never, never forget those gifts. So thank you to him and, and other teachers like them.
Good, thank you. Next item, I think.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
I just want to keep on the radar, I, I brought this up at the college meeting, and I'm gonna bring it up at the P-12 meeting, that I would like to have a, a bylaws workshop for all the board members and, and the cabinet members and the college, so that we can be sure that we, we understand both the P-12 and the college, which really they're, they pretty much mirror each other, bylaws for the board members so that we make sure that we're always following our own rules.
Okay.
We could contact MASP and see what they.
Right, I wanted to wait until we knew that our new college president was in place, because I think it's important for both the superintendent and the college president to also understand, so that if any one of us accidentally forgets and, and.
Support each other.
Right, we can, we can remind each other.
So what were you talking about with MASP?
I was just saying, I can contact them if you're interested to see what trainings they offer.
Oh, okay.
Because they.
That would be good.
They do, I know they offer trainings, so. There's other groups too.
But, but we need, we need them to work specifically off of our.
Bylaws.
Bylaws.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, we'll see. And I don't know what they have at the, you know, what the college would use, but I can look into what P-12.
Okay.
Availability, you know, with our network groups.
Right.
Trustee Barry.
I'd like to thank Mr. Abem Shur for the follow-up information he gave us, regarding some of my questions regarding the free lunch program. I've learned a new term, CEP, from him and from doing my own research online, that's providing free lunch for all. From what I understand, we have some buildings that are doing that already, Dr. Maliko?
Yes, yeah, there's several. Tom, do you remember how many buildings we had? Eight?
Eight. I would like to get a list, now doesn't have to be, get a list of those.
Sure, sure.
And the other one, since he's not here, I won't take a shot at Mr. Shur, but he went to school to be an educator and he's a great basketball coach. But I asked a business question, I don't think he answered it. My question was, at what point as a district, as a district, do we, what point do we get to where it's actually costless money to charge for lunches? Please. He answered, he answered the question, I guess, the best he knows of, but didn't answer my question.
Okay.
Please.
Anybody else? Okay, next item, please.
Dr. Mead's favorite part.
Yes, it is.
Future meeting dates. Monday, July sixteenth, twenty eighteen, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting, seven PM, at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosna Boardroom. Monday, July thirteenth, twenty eighteen, P through twelve, Board of Education Meeting, seven PM, at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom. Monday, August thirteenth, twenty eighteen, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting, seven PM, at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosna Boardroom. Monday, August twentieth, twenty eighteen, P through twelve, Board of Education Meeting, seven PM, at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom. And Monday, October twenty ninth, twenty eighteen, P through twelve, Board of Education Session, Study Session, pending board approval, five PM, at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom.
We are adjourned.